Good.
Yeah.
Everybody, welcome to the April tenth Select Board meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have to flag the United States of America and to the Republic of which is against one nation under God.
Invisible, with liberty and justice.
We have any citizen's statements or petitions? Who wants to be heard? Hearing none, we don't have any correspondents not already located further in the agenda, so let's go into our on-street hearing. Formally with the requirements of Mass General Lodge Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-two, the Men's Select Board hereby give notice that it will hold a hearing on April tenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty PM in the Upper Town Hall Meeting Room for the Menden Town Hall, Twenty Main Street, Menden, Mass. The one seven five six, it considered some intention to the layout acceptance of on-street men mass. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. I have a motion.
I move Joe from the public hearing to serve letting out and accepting upon street and then Massachusetts.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much. And are you from G and H?
Hi, this is Amanda with Gary Aaron Howland.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. So as far as this evening goes, my understanding is it's the planning or the applicant of Fonzo Builders is looking to get the road acceptance plan squared away with Pond Street with the Select Board.
That's correct. Is there anybody online who has any questions with the layout? The documents have been available and this is the almost the last step in a long process. It's been before the Planning Board. All the parties are being have an opportunity to be heard. You want to, do you want to pull the this up on the screen for a minute, the layout? There's the layout, I think is the second page, right?
I think it is. That looks like an older plan. I believe the one that was sent over is dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I can bring that up if you'd like.
Yeah, sure, that'd be great.
It'll just be one minute. Here we go. Yeah, right. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Alright. So that's sheet one of three. So we have that one. We have the plan and profile. And the second plan and profile. Right there.
Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, I guess the general question I have is more the Planning Board. Obviously, it's looked at this, I'd say, has highway, everybody signed off on everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Who am I to question, right?
We did a final walkthrough. It's all and any issues that were concerned were addressed by Fonzo's.
Thank you.
And look for motion to close the public hearing.
Sure. I moved to close the public hearing to consider laying out and accepting upon street and Massachusetts.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, I looked for motion to approve the layout of the Pond Street as a public way.
I move to approve the layout of Pond Street as a townway. It is in the opinion of Select Board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of townways at this location.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, on to the proposal that Mike Goddard solicited for the Collin Center to do facilitation. Yes, I think this gets back to conversations we've had about the operational structure. Organizational design is kind of referred to it as spoke to the Collin Center to see if they did anything like this in support of municipalities, they do. So the proposal that was sent around just outlined sort of what they were offering to do and basically it comes down to really three things. The first is I really wanted to get an ounce, a third party's view of what other municipalities are doing in terms of structure and understanding possible synergies that are out there that we may not be taking advantage of within our own operations. So they will bring that perspective to the table. They'll also do they will also meet with it says department heads in the document, one thing we should probably think about is I think it's more than department heads. But basically, department heads, possibly FinCon Chair, things like that to understand basically do a SWOT analysis, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats in terms of the operations. Then they would bring that information together and facilitate a workshop, at least four to five hours of the board so that we can kind of understand what the opportunities are and step away with sort of an idea where what recommendations we might make and or changes we'd make in terms of the structure. You know, whether it be management, flat, flat structure, multi-layer management structure, shared resources, what have you, be able to have a better sense of holistically of what opportunities we might have. I mean, it will look it'll take into account the DLS that we've we've used, the highway state that we've used, but more across the span of the full operations. And I think the cost was, I believe, seventy-five hundred dollars to do that work. They laid out some tentative dates and right now there's no commitment. I just wanted to make sure people saw it. If it's something that we think we want to pursue, then I think the chair had said possibly bring them in to get more details if you have questions. But I would say if we want to move ahead, there's one thing they said is identify a point of contact to move the process forward. If we're interested, I have a thought that would be, and it's not me. But anyway, discussion, that's really what this is about now, not necessarily a decision.
Oh, my, my thought was that Brenda taken point to pulls, I guess, that these, you know, policies that we were going to have a meeting to talk about. The policies, I was thinking we could maybe schedule them to come in and speak to us at that meeting, we're going to talk about the policies and let them make their presentation. Does that make sense to you?
I don't think they have a presentation. They gave us a proposal, so it's sort of a question of whether we want to move ahead with sort of that type of action now. We can modify it. I think that point of contact would work with them with any feedback we have and they could, they could come into that meeting. But that's why, well, as long as that, you know, they did lay out some dates because they are kind of, I think Jen, I don't know if you have a way in, but they kind of were sort of trying to fit us in. Which is why I think they laid out a tentative sort of structure on those dates. But the idea was to fit us in before the end of the fiscal year, so in the June timeframe, I think, was what they were targeting. So if we can do both, that's, that's fine. I'm not sure the two necessarily are. Are they, do you see synergies between the two efforts or is?
I, I mean, just as an opportunity to, hopefully it wouldn't be a really long meeting, so it just, there'll be room.
You wrote like a forty-page. We're going through with a fine-tooth comb, you kidding me?
As, as long as it's after the after ATM. Yeah, that's all my thought was, we pick a date after the ATM and we could actually, this could help us pick a date to do the policies, for certain, just we'll see. But then Jen, you have all the dates?
So I just have the May and June.
Right, they laid out some general.
Yeah.
I mean, I would actually like to recommend that Jen be the point of contact since she's had some discussions with them. So that right with you?
Yeah, Mike and I had a conversation about it.
Great, I don't want to put my thumb on the scale, but their findings, which I tend to have opinions, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So how, I mean, we are looking for a town administrator and I guess I wonder whether it might be advantageous to wait, I mean, until we know something more. This could be a good way for a new town administrator to get involved with the organization as a whole. Just, but I, I mean, I could see it going either way. I'm, I'm in favor of doing this, but I guess my question is when?
Well, I, I think that's a great point, but I still think that we could still pick a time, you know, after the ATM to have them come in and talk about it, but not necessarily start the process until we have a permanent town administrator in place so that they can be, they could be one of the stakeholders that they need to talk to, work with, so. But everybody else is thought you want to wait until we get the TA in place? Or we haven't come in, I, I, I don't, I think it's hard, I think it would be probably great to have him come in personally and just address us.
Yeah, through these policies. And then if they're going to do some level of discussions with various individuals, they could actually get started on that process, you know, as well.
That's true.
I mean, I think the TA would absolutely be one, a, I always say whoever we hire should have a perspective. The one thing they won't have is a perspective on what currently exists, right? So they actually would benefit from that data collection.
I agree.
As they step in, so when they get to a workshop, I would say that resource would absolutely have to be involved.
Yeah, I agree with that. Alright, Jen, if you could find out what dates they have after May third and then we'll circle back next meeting and pick a date.
Yeah, just last move, I think the person they have lined up is actually the same individual that worked on highway studies, who's got some.
Oh, great.
With Menden.
Plus. Right. Number six, the Semlech agreement that please Chief read out to me about the Central Mass Law Enforcement Council agreement that each one of the, each one of the member town signs, Chief Currie, if you want to brief everybody on it.
Sure, so this is a Semlech, this is our regional group that we're involved with Worcester County for services, it's sick over a little over sixty communities within Worcester County and it's set, it's been set up well over twenty years, twenty-five years. The last time we had a signed agreement updated was over ten years ago. I'm on the current Semlech Board, I serve as one of the chiefs that runs a unit and we thought it'd be a good time to update it since the current agreement, there's not one chief that's still actually active. So we want to update it and maybe every five years start updating it. What Semlech allows us to do is share resources for serious incidents that we have. We have a tack unit, a motor unit, a drone unit, I run the canine unit and a few other units that we use to share resources. So say we have a major accident in town and we need it reconstructed. We used to have to wait for the state police and they could sometimes take hours to come out and to get them to testify and get the evidence back. It's just the backlog, it takes a long time. We have individual units that will come out within an hour and then the board monitors to make sure we produce everything, you know, efficiently and appropriately. All the members are trained extensively, they go to out-of-state training, they go to several tiers of levels, so that the best in their field. So we just thought it'd be time, time to update this and include all the units and make sure that we have a modern, modern agreement. It pretty much deputizes the offices that come in. It's still under the chief's control for that town, but it gives you other resources in there sworn officers so they can testify and we don't have any issues with court or evidence procedure or any, any, anything else. So it just, it's an agreement that has worked out well for the past, you know, quarter of a century.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, the, the significant difference between the last agreement and this one is just the, the ability of a currently serving chief to be on the board, that's it.
It's just, there's, the agreement's pretty much just the exact same thing, it's just an update, it's just to get current signatures, current. We, we, we realize boards change on a regular basis, chiefs change on a regular basis. We've had communities drop out of Semlech, new communities join and we have new communities that have joined and we don't have signatures for them, so we thought it'd be a good time right now to, if there are communities that aren't part of it anymore, we can remove them from our lists and if there are new members that we haven't had agreement signed, that we can get it all signed, filed and for evidentiary purposes, it's, it's been called upon at court, you know, where's your most recent agreement? So we, we're going to create a big PDF with all these agreements and we're going to provide it to the Worcester County DA, so we don't have that issue anymore of, of, you know, an updated agreement.
That makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else having questions? If they're on, I just look for a motion to approve the Central Mass Law Enforcement Council Mutual Aid Agreement as presented. I moved second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the budget. Hopefully, we will, we need to take a vote tonight to approve the budget so we can give it to the FinCon so they can make their recommendation and have their budget hearing. So if the members of the FinCon want to come up and open your meeting and Jody, if you want to come up and David, any other, any other department, anyone joining around the table, his room, welcome, or not.
Question I have, does, maybe to the FinCon Chair, this need to be approved tonight because I know last week I kind of had a few sharpen the pencils, go back and look for some stuff that I probably need to hear about before I would vote on it. Do you need this approved tonight or could this be approved next week or?
I did not have anything on the books for next week.
For us to meet to do approval, I thought.
Just, just for us to go through this, what's the deadline for us to have it printed?
I need it the eighteenth to go to the printer.
So as long as we have availability, we can meet again next Wednesday to vote on it.
Sure. And share wide.
Alright, well, why don't we open the FinCon, six fifty PM? It says open. Yeah, I mean, based off of the schedule we previously discussed, I expected for us to vote on it tonight. We don't have to, but.
What is it that, what is it that we're? I, I guess, let's, let's just see if it organically happens. We'll go through this and see if everything's alright and if everything is in place that we can make those decisions with, with you know, here, let's do it because obviously Jody's got everything laid out, so we'll have a balanced budget, but let's walk through these recommendations and, and see if there's anything else. My, it's my only, well, let's walk through it.
Yeah, I would say if there's no actions that come out of our discussion and we're able to vote, then let's vote. If there are actions and we all agree that those need to go be taken, then we can wait, so.
Um, so for everybody in the room, there are copies of the budget summary, so two pages, I'll bring you back last week real quick. So last week I presented a balanced budget with a revenue finalized revenue projection of twenty-three million nine eighty-eight eighty-eight and recommended expenditures that match that. Within our discussion last week, there was some feedback from both boards that the conservation position was something that you wanted to pursue, looking at a little bit closer. Looking potentially at not using our funds for fire purchase and looking at the council on aging position. So I sort of highlighted those three things within this page, just to kind of call out those to explore a little bit further. So that being said, everything grayed out on this sheet still stands as a modification to the department requests for a total, you know, expenditure adjustment as we saw before, and then that brought us to a balanced budget. So that's sort of catching up from last week. This week, we're looking again at the same revenue projection and the same expenditure protection, we just moved the pieces around a little bit, okay? So what I've done on this page is shown you the three things that were important to take a peek at a little bit closer. The total expenditures were a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred dollars, of which, again, if you would like to see these items in the budget, whether it be one in part or all, or all three items in the budget, then something else has to be adjusted along the way, right? So what I did is I just went into the line item detail, which again, I also forwarded both boards so that you guys could drill down to whatever ran the other detail that you would like. But I caught, I kind of called out some of the higher things that were areas of opportunities, what I called them. So you'll see on the left-hand side each department and then what the detail was and what the impact would be if you chose that item as opposed to one of the things that I had originally called out. So that being said, I, I feel like we can talk about that a little bit. The reason that I had suggested we vote next week was just more so that I could fine tune the details, not really take next week to make any further decisions, but rather just take the time that if I have to make a tweak here or there, that I have the flexibility to be able to do that in the spirit of what we're talking about. Not make dramatic changes, but I just don't want to do anything on the fly in this meeting, should these decisions be made and I have to kind of work some things behind the scenes. So that would be my recommendation, but again, I'll let you guys sort of talk about it and if there's anything that we want to discuss as far as adjustments go. Let's do that.
Trying to put up an Excel, I want to see if this detail.
So I'd like to talk through the areas of opportunity, right? So there were requests made last time about things we'd like to fund and here's some opportunities for us to do that. So the Board of Health item, right, reduced by ten thousand. I'd like to understand a little more. I apologize if you sent that out in the detail, but the question that I had about where the, the ten thousand came from. Because they had originally asked for thirteen-two.
Yeah, which was quite an increase over the previous year. It was two thousand dollars in that line item, so I too dug into that a bit more. So the, the detail around that is in speaking with the Board of Health Agent, I had asked for sort of that breakdown, you know, what is that thirteen-two and what is, what does that all make up? And generally speaking, it was, you know, repairs, testing, you know, kind of broad descriptions. So I got a little bit more detail and it was a permit modification at about three thousand dollars, which is a one-time expense, twelve hundred dollars for inspections every two years, fifteen hundred dollars for legal counsel to draft a right-of-way agreement, again, a one-time expense, maintenance at seventy-five hundred dollars was just a number that they kind of threw out there. Should the Highway Department not be able to help, you know, certain things that are historically helped with. And so I said, okay, well, sharpen your pencil and help me understand what's a need as opposed to, you know, let's kind of beef up this account. So in that, I made the following recommendation and that really was to keep, keep the money for testing to use that funding, and that was the twelve hundred dollars, use that towards maintenance in the off-year. So where that testing was every two years, I said, use that twelve hundred dollars in the off-year for testing. Remove the fifteen, fifteen hundred dollars for the legal needs. We have a line item for legal needs and we can certainly take it out of that budget. Reduce the three thousand dollar permit modification request to two thousand, that was reasonable. That's also a one-time expense, but again, you know, we can leave that in there and use that as maintenance as well. And then I said that we should remove the entire seventy-five hundred dollars in maintenance. So essentially, sort of re allocating that thirteen thousand dollars, making a, a total of ten thousand dollars in reductions and then leaving thirty-two hundred dollars in that line item, which is a more reasonable increase from a two thousand dollar previous year ask. So that's how that came to be.
Okay. It did seem like if I looked at the Board of Health's report that for the Lake Nipmuck testing, they had, it was like two grand and change in terms of testing and they budgeted last year and this year ten thousand for that. So the act, so the ten thousand budget versus the two thousand actuals, did they have any comments on, on that?
No, and again, I would never just slice and dice, you know, with speaking to the department heads and this was comfortable. And again, you know, I look at using our, our funds for the intention that they, they are, right? So if we, if should something come up maintenance-wise, you know, there's a FinCon reserve bucket for that. If we find that we're, you know, running hot in a certain area, you know, we have STM to add some funding should we need to one time. So in this situation, I'm, I'm comfortable making these recommendations and again, in speaking with the department, it was a reasonable reduction.
Um, so the second one in terms of the civil defense to not increase the funding, right? This was, I think, the discussion around the emergency management.
Yep.
Time that needs to be put in. My personal opinion is that that's one that should not be touched. I think that that should not be an area of opportunity here. I think we should strike that from the list, but that's my personal opinion.
So my motivation there was if we, if we looked at this as a one-time funding type situation, it was also discussed last week that that could be discussed through individual contract negotiations with the parties that it, that it affects. And that would be a discussion and a decision by the board. So for the purposes of budget in this year, it could be a situation where we sort of hold off on it for this fiscal, fund it if the board so chose through a one-time funding, maybe STM, and then looked to contract negotiations to solidify that a little bit further.
Yeah, I think this is also something that when it was presented, it was more of it's a number, we need to negotiate and we haven't actually got that yet. So I feel like this one's sort of in flux as to what that number should be.
Yep.
That prefer to negotiate and if we need to do something retro or one time and like, you know, STM next year to reckon, I mean, let's put it this way. I, we need to fund the individuals doing this work because this is a lot of work that people have been very good about doing. But I think at this point in time, I don't know what that number is, so do we really want to put it in the budget right now?
Yeah. Okay, I'm aligned with that, so, yeah. Okay.
Again, you also noticed that, you know, the three things up above, the two and eleven, you know, a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred dollars, but the reductions that I sort of big picture found in the budget to further reduce sixty-five, sixty-seven, five, so there's still a forty-three, eight, should you decide you wanted to do all these things. So there's still a forty three, eight, should you decide you wanted to do all these things that we'll still need to find, right? In addition to saying, yep, we gotta cut all this stuff too. So that's really where we go back and say, okay, you know. It's kind of a this or that, right?
Yeah, just a question on five forty one. When we talked about that last week, that twenty eight four includes.
Sorry, Mike, bring me in.
Yeah, twenty. That, that twenty eight is benefits because we're going to a full, a large chunk is benefits. We talked about a possible part time strategy.
Yeah, there could be a different strategy there. Actually, that number to drill down on a little bit more detail there. I know that the, the request for hours was X, but they could also fund it through some of their own funding options.
I get that my question though of the twenty eight that I'm looking at there, that is partly driven by a full benefits package.
There would be full benefits. Let me just. Yeah, so that, that. So basically what I did is said, okay, you know, let's increase the hours just a tiny bit. The benefits was actually, it would have been a thirty one thousand dollar add to the budget plus for benefits, plus ninety eight fifty. For to compensate for the nine hours. So it would have been a total of about forty two thousand dollars, right? So the reason it's only twenty four forty is because I had to right size the actual budget amount. That the department heads had put in to make sure that it was clean right down to the number, right down to the, you know, the dollars. And then I added an extra hour. I know it's not much, but it's, it's literally eighteen hours is what they are at. Let's do the best we possibly can without popping into benefits and said. Add another eleven hundred dollars to this line item to get that person at least a little bit more time. I know it's not a lot, but that annualized. Was about eleven hundred dollars. Therefore, the new number for that budget. Should have been a hundred and fifty one, one, ten. So if we don't do the benefits and we don't increase the hours. And we right size what the department heads request was just to, you know, be true to the actual cost, it would be a reduction of twenty eight four forty.
You lost me on that one. That's, but. Everyone's good. I will follow along.
So, so the short answer is it is benefits and. Hours, benefits and hours.
Could separate the two is my point.
If we did love so levels, level service, level service of no change in the amount of hours. There is a reduction of twenty eight four forty in the expenditure.
Yeah, if we did level service, it would actually be a reduction. It's a little bit more than that, only because I had to right size the actual number that.
It's a reduction or an increase.
So right now the expenditure includes the additional hour. Or the did a couple, it includes additional hours plus benefits. And a right sizing of previous actual hours spent. Right? So there was a budget put in that was based off of the amount of hours that the person was putting on.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the accounting side where I see twenty eight thousand is considered positive on this piece of papers. That's an increase.
Correct.
Right. So it's not a reduction in expenditures. It's an increase in expenditures. Right?
Well, so here's how.
The expenditure line item for the budget reduces by twenty eight four forty if we do not move it to a full time position. So.
If you take action.
The overall budget, no, if we take action, we gotta find twenty eight. That's to say it's a, I mean, yeah.
So I, I understand what you're saying.
Get from somewhere else. Yeah.
Yeah. So one of. If we wanted to, one of the, the items I was going to bring up was of the three requests. My personal opinion is the one that we should focus on is the conversion of the part time position to full time for the conservation commission. One way to do that is to not support the council on aging increase. To a full time position and use part of that funding. Plus maybe some of the other budget adjustments in order to help pay for it.
So, so it's a good point. I kind of want to start there is collectively. Which of these three do we want to prioritize? I would agree. That Mike, that my focus is on the conservation line item of sixty thousand. That's the one I. If we can do anything, that's the one I would want to try to make happen.
And I want to validate my, my question of this is to support Ann's request around the land use committee. Right? And all of the financial benefits that comes from all of the work that's put in from all of the emails detailed.
This would, yeah, so this would be the ten hours towards the green administration. Correct. My understanding is it includes that as well. Yeah. So. It'd be like thirty to concert concom, ten to green for forty hour position is my understanding.
I, I, I still have the question. That I asked last time about. Changing the fees for the folks that basically generate the need for this. Conservation. Agent. How does that fit into this mix?
Changing the.
In other words, in other words, when we looked at the fees that the town admin and charges. Compared to other communities in the area, we're woefully behind. Question is, do we have any, any idea of projection of what kind of revenue that's going to generate and how soon we can access to that? Because perhaps this, this money we need to find. We may be able to realize it in increasing the fees.
Yeah, I've not done any analysis around that. I mean, the conservation folks, I don't know, Isabella, if you have any.
Can I make a suggestion though? Cause just cause right now, whatever we have, it's not going to be ready for, for future.
I don't know. See, I know that, I know that. I'm, my understanding is unlike other revenue, if there, there's money that's generated by. Mona, because you may be able to answer this question and I, I think you should certainly be involved, but you can sit right there. You can take a couple of checks.
Maybe I'm wrong. But just like we were just talking about, looking further into the year, you know, the special. To, to, to backfill or maybe turn, or maybe even take this position to talking about making it. Our time, full time, maybe we keep it part time and then we plan to increase during the year. At the, at the special of the fall. If we, if we fix the, change the revenue. I don't know, maybe you can shed some light on, on those fees, what the potential is of the addition, you know, based on past experience and. If you would increase those fees to be. Appropriate compared to the other towns of the area and, you know, what kind of revenue that might generate and. And when you could access those, in other words, is it a revolving fund thing where you could use it as soon as it came in? Does it have to go down to the general fund? You know, and then. Get funded for the following year. How does it?
Yeah. So the, there's two sets of fees that conservation commission gets. They get the state portion of the filing fee, which goes into the wetland protection account. And then they get the bylaw filing fee, which goes into the revolving account. The state wetland protection account that we have. I don't think really has been used at all. There's currently quite a lot of money in it. And that's what was approved to override part of my hours for the end of the year. So that's where that money's coming out of that budget line.
Do we know how much is in there?
It's going to be a little bit under forty five thousand dollars. And so that's what they've accumulated. The bylaw fees.
And that's based on the current fees. We haven't adjusted those.
That's based on the state fees, so that wouldn't change very much. The revolving account doesn't have much in it because I think it's been taken out of. It's been voted to take money out of that account sometimes when there's not enough. In other ways, so I don't have an accurate analysis of that.
Within conservation.
No, it's been, there's been a couple of times where that account has been, money's been taken out during annual town meeting. And the interest in that account also goes into the general fund at the end of the year, unlike. The state account.
And that, that's the fund where we could adjust those fees.
We can adjust the.
To be more appropriate compared to what other towns.
Yeah. So the bylaw fees we could change. They're currently pretty low. And that would, that could be changed as soon as a public hearing. Concom would have to hold a public hearing and change their regulations. And those could go up however much we determine. I have to look at surrounding communities, but currently our fees are like a certificate of completion is fifteen dollars. But for example, with the current project, the grocery store, the thirty five, thirty seven Hastings Street. They had to pay thirty dollars under our town by law fee. Whereas if it was a different community, they'd have to pay per square foot of change. Which could be up to ten thousand dollars in some kinds of big projects with a lot of alteration. And. So I, I don't, I'm not able to do those kind of potential extractions, but there is a lot of room. And then the other point I will mention is that the state fees, if nobody's checking what they're submitting for a state fee. They don't have to submit the right fees. And so making sure that the, the monies being paid are appropriate and accurate. Is another part of it.
And. I realize you're, you're looking at the agent fee. You haven't been here for very long, but would that be, do you consider that part of your job or more of an administrative job within?
It's the agent's role to go over the, the application. Yeah. To make sure the application is.
Nobody looks, but you presumably you, you, you would be looking to make sure that those.
I'm saying like a board member. Isn't necessarily reviewing those parts of the project. So those kinds of things have been overlooked.
Circle back.
I mean, I think that that kind of validates maybe the need for this position, right?
Right? I mean, I think there's an opportunity. Then the question is, how do you fund that position? I'd be curious about the wetlands act to understand how. The frequency of money going in. So what I heard is there's a lot of money sitting in there because it hasn't been used, but has been accumulated over many years. I don't know that.
Yeah, that.
As that would be a. There's a benefit to the general fund or, you know, to the town from a revenue standpoint. It, it, I won't go back to the question. Do we even think this is, and I apologize, can you say, does anybody really feel this is a priority? You know, I mean, it's tough. It's, it's. No, 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 it's not. But I just, I mean, I think it's a priority just from a board standpoint.
I have a question. So I mean, I, I agree it's a priority, but I have a question about. Whether, I know there's been some talk about whether some of this could be funded by grants and I wonder if there is a way to. Increase the position to full time, but not. Full hours and then seek out the grants to fund additional hours.
You know what I'm going to suggest? I just, how about if we have the, the town administrator circle back? And, and take the week to look at it with, with her and Jody, and then we're just going to have to come back next week. With a final recommendation, I would ask that you could put your heads together and, and make a final recommendation. Because I, I think everything else we talked about, except for the council on aging. And this position, we're all in agreement with everything else. Is that fair or not?
Well, we haven't reconciled everything. I'd say I agree next week, but I would say I still haven't heard from a board perspective. We all. Well, I've heard Elena say it's a priority. I've heard me say it's a priority. I've inferred it's a priority.
It is absolutely.
And Brendan?
Yeah, I think, I think it is.
So this, this would be something we want the TA and Jody and folks to take away. And I'll ask the pincon the same question to make it happen. How?
That's, well, that's what I'm getting at is the idea is to, to just take this week to, because I, I think we're close enough. You can drill down on either next week. Yes, we can and no, we can't. And if we can make it happen full time and it's feasible, then we will. If we, if we can't, we won't. And then that gives us the opportunity, not, not yet. But you know, the, the other answer could be that maybe, maybe we can't right away because we have to adjust these fees with the anticipation. That we can put some of it now and then finish it in the fall. At, at the special town meeting. I mean, that's the question. Can we do it now? I, I don't think there's any question. It needs to happen. It needs to happen quickly. The issue is, can we do it now for the beginning of the fiscal year? Do we have to look at it once the fiscal year is started? That's my, that's my thought, my, my feeling, my suggestion.
Yeah, I think I can make a big picture recommendation and, and again, fine tune it. After we stop talking tonight and I kind of go to work tomorrow.
No, it's just not talking.
So if, if we, if we're able to look at the sixty thousand dollars basically for the conservation position. I can look at areas of the budget that I know. I can make some reductions that I've communicated. And come up with sort of what's the bottom number I still need to find, right? So if I look at across this and say, okay, you know, ten thousand dollars, board of health, based on what I just explained, eight thousand dollars for outfitting a second ambulance. You know, with more supplies and more equipment maintenance, but it's not going to be on the road necessarily. It's a second vehicle. Eliminate the funding, the capital improvement. I mean, you add that up and we're at twenty three thousand dollars right there, right? So then civil defense, we decided, okay, well, maybe that gets funded through, you know, again, a one time funding source in the fall. So there's another twenty two, five, right? So now I'm at over forty thousand dollars. So my gap is now twenty, right? So I think that if I, if you see what I'm working with, right? And then I can say, okay, I can get us to within thirty hours, right? Thirty hours of benefits. I can do that. And then work with the land use committee, work with the wetland protection act funds, look at the revolving account and, and really kind of see. If I can source that extra ten hours from somewhere, then that'll pull all the pieces together. So if you're in agreement with me walking away and doing that. Then I'm confident we can sit here next week and you guys can look across this and say done.
I would, I would, what I would ask is that, that. Greg, that, that you and Jody and Isabella, you get together this week. I guess maybe tomorrow is the only day left, right? Because Friday, Friday was closed, Monday is a holiday, I guess between either tomorrow or Tuesday. And we'll put it on the agenda. So we, we do have something for the agenda for next week. And we'll come back and we will take a final vote if that's acceptable to the fincom.
I just want to poll the fincom members. Is there anybody that disagrees with the priority of? Position or has a different opinion? Jack, Nick? Make sure I capture you guys. They're online.
Yeah, this is Nick. I, I just have a question. And it's a question around a kind of cross. Department. Changes for the budget year. Are there any additional departments that are changing either part time to full time, adds to staff? Or are these the only changes to staffing for, for the budget cycle?
This would be the only conversion from a part time to a full time employee would be this, this one.
And there's no other add of staff that's requested across any of the departments.
We still talk about the council on aging.
Yeah, I was gonna say there are requests, but it's not anything that we, I mean.
That we prioritize this year.
Right. So if you go back to the very first page of this, there was a request from. Fire as well for a full time fire prevention person. And there was a request for the council on aging, as Mike was mentioning. For a full, a part time to full time conversion and there was the conservation. So. What I'm hearing is that we're prioritizing for this fiscal year, the conservation position. From part time to full time for this upcoming fiscal year.
Yeah, that, that this is the exact, that's the exact information I was looking for to make sure that we're looking kind of cross all departments and making. If, that we're making, you know, the decision that this is a priority based. Based on need versus the others that have been requested. So that's, that answers it. Thank you.
Yeah, we've actually, Nick, you, you, you might remember that, you know, this is something we do every year and actually conservation was always put at the bottom. And it's, I, I think it, whether it's understandable or not, it's a mistake. And I think, I think we're prioritizing it correctly. That's my opinion that we need to prioritize it now. Maybe we should have done it sooner, but we're prioritizing it now. So.
Anybody, sure. And the fees, I'm sorry, Nick, did you?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Concerning the fees, is that something that is done by conservation, by select board, by the town? How it fees, I guess.
Conservation commission would, would, would set their fees.
They'll be there. Yeah, it'll be your subject matter experts.
Yes.
And then the board will.
And the board, we would, right, we would approve them.
The conservation commission can approve their regulations under the bylaw. So they just have to hold a public hearing and they can change the fees.
And we would weigh in, but, but I think, I think it is at the purview of the concom that we appointed to make that decision, right?
But one other question generally concerning fees. Do you know if this, I'm the only one that has lower fees? I know Mike's already shaking his head because maybe this is something that.
No, it is. It is. You're right. It's something that needs to be addressed across the board. And it's something that we've been talking about, but again, it's a matter of. Following through.
I think board of health recently raised some of their fees and the building department has kind of low fees as well. The other one thing I will say about fees is. There were many things that were not.
things that were not deposited over the last two years. And then the other part is a lot of projects have been approved without doing a complete application. And so things are getting bypassed, um, not paying fees, permits are being issued without being paid. So I think it'll be difficult to maybe look at how much revenues come in the last couple of years.
I was gonna say too, that, um, my recommendation would be to get a little time under our belt with some adjusted fees and see what that looks like before we commit a percentage of that per se, you know, um, get a little bit of time, so we'll start tracking that.
All right, there's nothing else we're gonna.
Just real quick, the, the, help me understand the ambulance line item, the twenty two five, so because we talked about using ARPA and I don't wanna use ARPA to.
Are you talking about up top? Yeah, so, so basically what this is, is that we're not, we're not realizing the benefit of the lease payment. So the twenty two five up top, if we're not going to do that, then that twenty two five would come from something else. Because right now, the benefit of that in the budget already, we would be, we talked about potentially, um, making making that payment in the fall through a different funding source. So that we didn't have to reduce it from somewhere else in the budget. So that could be another one that we use as sort of that one-time expense.
So we still plan on doing a lease and getting the second ambulance?
Correct.
We have a difference from the original budget of twenty two five because the lease due to interest rates and such is higher, correct? So we're gonna bridge a gap? Potentially?
It's, it's, I don't wanna get too detailed, but so we don't take receipt of the vehicle until October of this year. So the lease is just based on an estimate, the estimate should have been, so what was baked into the budget was sixty five thousand five hundred. And in order to keep that level funded, I just pursued a creative option to keep that level funded by putting a down payment on the vehicle through ARPA.
In October?
Yep.
When we take, and we wanna do a lease and don't use ARPA, do we have to find money in October is my question?
Um, do we have to find money in October?
Not in October, not until.
No, so we, it, we can arrange the lease in a couple of different ways. Um, but yes, I would, I would look to make a payment in October, yes.
And Jody, what I'm saying is, we're gonna take, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to take the second ambulance in October. And we're gonna have a balanced budget in July, and I don't have to worry about taking the ambulance in October. We're good, we're covered. Or do we have to do something to make sure we can cover the cost of the ambulance?
We will be on the hook for a payment of sixty five thousand five hundred. And not the forty three thousand that I put into the budget.
Okay, so we gotta find the twenty two five in for October.
Correct.
Which could be one-time funds.
One-time fund to supplement the payment.
So the reason I ask the question is, if we plan on taking the ambulance, then number two, the fire line item is our second priority. That we need to make sure we're whole on come next week through. You know what I mean? We gotta find twenty two five in, either in the budget or say we're gonna defer, we're gonna use free cash next, whatever.
Right, so I thought last meeting we were questioning, because we weren't going to bring on this, the additional FTE for the Fire Department, weren't we questioning whether we were going to do the second ambulance or not at all?
No, we've sort of, we always, we always were gonna have a second ambulance, the question is, we we just would do it with staff that would call.
I did ask that question, you're, you were.
Okay, all right. I guess, what I guess I said is we had an answer.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I'll just summarize and clarify. Last town meeting, we voted for the ambulance, approved the lease payment, et cetera. So we're getting a new ambulance. It isn't gonna be delivered till this October. The old ambulance, there was discussion around either trading it in and and getting a trade for it or to keep it as a backup, not nas, not necessarily in service because there's costs to equip it and outfit it and staff it, right? But because the lead times were so long, if we were without an ambulance, you couldn't get a new one if there was an accident or something. So it would have been a a working machine on the side, a working truck to be able to convert the equipment over and and run it.
And we've, we've done this in the past where we've committed and then we've had to do supplemental monies to cover the lease because of that lag between commitment and receiv, right?
Correct. So I guess my other question then is, I know you have a hesitancy to use the ARPA funds, what is the other? What is the other utilization of the ARPA funds that you have in mind? Because this also brings down the overall expense to the town.
A couple of things come to mind.
Go ahead.
Yeah, from the capital side, uh, we could look to, you know, to to maybe to fund that twenty two five, we might look at the, you know, the police cruiser budget, which we, you know, we're increasing to kind of continue, push that rotation out one or two fiscal years. And actually buy a cruiser outright instead of one, we buy two, and then lease one, which was, we were buying one and leasing two. And then there's also the support one vehicle for the fire, the chief, that's an FY twenty six capital item that we might consider pulling in to this, because we gotta, we really gotta really spend or we gotta contract all the ARPA funds by the end of the year.
Yeah, I know that had a clock on it, just have to commit them, right? We don't have to spend them.
We have to.
I was gonna make a comment too, that if we, if we spend the ARPA funds on a second police vehicle, then what was budgeted as like a thirty thousand dollar uptick from last year to this year in that capital line item for the Police Department, we can use that money to offset this lease.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying? So we'll be able to juggle that. So I feel like we're, we're like five percent away from.
Right, okay. Rest of the ARPA funds, I would like to, you know, throw out supplemental roadwork for for the next fiscal year. So we've got some earmarked now. But I think the pavement study is a five-year plan. If we can do three-year plan, thank you, John, but if we can do, you know, start to earmark supplemental funding on top of chapter ninety for multiple years, I think that's probably a good thing that most of the people in town could get behind.
And it might even save us some money in the long run, because then it's not as deteriorated when we get to it.
Right, yep, okay.
The roads, so.
So, so what I'm hearing is we're asking Jody to kind of to look at one and two and come back next week with a balanced budget. Number three, I I I would, I think we talked about just two part-times versus benefits last time. I don't know if there's anything we'll look at number three for the C, the COA resources.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, I'm personally at least hesitant to go to the full-time just because of the added expense, the two-part-time is a better value proposition. But the, seeing how much we need to find from the budget to support all three. If there is one that we weren't going to support at all, it's that one. So if we need to cross one of the three out in order to make this a balanced budget, my personal recommendation would be to use that one as the one we cross out and at least give the extra hour to, again, it's not much. But, uh, limited.
As ordered, that'd be your priority, mine too, and all, it's both boards.
Right, and I think, I think Greg, Greg and Jody can can weigh in with us during the week when she gets in the answer to that.
Yeah.
So, and then we'll take a final vote next week at the, at our meeting.
Yeah, so I've been talking with Jody on this, just because it's easier for one person to interact with one person. So I guess from the FinCon perspective, Jack, Nick, online, you guys, like, is there any other comments to, any other opinions about what's here? So.
I I don't have any, I don't have any, this is Nick.
Yeah, this is, this is Jack, and the course that's being described here makes sense to me, thank you.
All right, so it sounds like we're in alignment on the priorities. Do you guys wanna stick around or you wanna adjourn? Uh, yeah, can you get a motion to join the FinCon?
Give me a second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thanks very much, seven twenty nine. And, uh, would we mind doing the, uh, the bridge thing and then after that's done, I can skedaddle?
Um, we have, we actually have a couple of things, we have council on, and we have a couple of things with the the Board of Assessors that have to have to join us, and then we're gonna go right into that after we do the assesses, so. Mr. Chairman, do you, you, you folk guys wanna come up? Sure, well, if, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Ken, we, I I think you guys, I think you guys are posted for tonight, right?
We did, yes.
Okay, so I figured you'd wanna, Gene, do you wanna join us too? No? Okay, all right. No, not yet, you're the next one, you're after.
By the way, wh- when sitting back there, you cannot hear what's going on over here.
That speaker behind you up on top, I don't see the red light, and I know that Dan wired it so it would work.
It's not.
Um, but it's not turned on.
So the, uh, the hearing impaired folks.
So everybody, so everybody at home can actually hear better than than you can, you're saying, out there in the audience. Is it, can you see if you can just, there should be a switch there that there should be a dial on the front, I think, that could be turned on?
I did.
I'm, and I I apologize for that, that was. How's that? Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Can you just crank it down just a little bit, the volume control, so it's not?
Maybe I could have taken.
See, Ken, if everybody spoke like, like you, we wouldn't have an issue.
Let's try that now, how's that?
Okay.
Can you hear me back there?
All right, I I I apologize. All right, so, so let's talk about number eight first, um, I know that it's, we had received, uh, a request for for abatement of real estate taxes taxes for the, um, for the paddock property seventy three seven of a Providence Street.
What do you think about it?
I don't know anything about it either.
Well, I'm, uh, but it's, it's, it's just the kind of appropriate, I grouped it because we're talking about the position too.
So is this that you needed to, um, uh, file for an abatement?
Yes, but basically we received a letter from the principal assessor um, that said that, uh, that you, you needed us to to give a letter. I have a letter here um, that's addressed to the Board of Assessors that I would sign once we, once we voted, that says, uh, Dear Board of Assessors, at their duly posted meeting held on April tenth, twenty twenty four, the Select Board unanimously voted to request the abatement of remaining real estate taxes owed in FY twenty twenty four as it relates to the property located at seventy three and seventy five Providence Street. So I guess I would be looking for a motion from, from the Select Board, um, to approve that.
Sure, I moved to authorize a letter from the Select Board to the Board of Assessors requesting the abatement of the remaining FY twenty four real estate taxes owed as it relates to the property at seventy three and seventy five Providence Street.
Second. All right, uh, I don't, any discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, so we have that letter, I know I I could get it done for, for your Monday meeting, but no, but but now it's done and I'll give it to Laura and she'll get, make sure it gets there. Um, the next one, Jen, do you wanna, you wanna come up too? Because I, all right. All right, everybody's afraid of us tonight. All right, so, um.
Speaking of that, Mr. Chairman, uh, by the way, uh, I only found out about this, this meeting, um, late Monday night, or Monday at 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 our meeting. And and I I would really appreciate it because I know that the uh, agenda has to be done within so many hours and whatnot, but you know, it, things, things are known. So I I would really appreciate if we could get longer notice, so I can handle things on my side, making sure that we're not punching our schedule.
Well, the issue, the issue was I didn't, um, anticipate that it would, that you would, you would actually be involved in this at this point, because my understanding was that the.
Who would be involved in?
What do you mean?
I'm a member of the Board of Assessors, who would be involved in?
The, the, the Select Board and 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 your chair, and you, and your chair.
Blackboard has nothing to do with it.
No, 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 Eddie's, Eddie's, no, no, the, the point is that you want, you want, you want.
You know, all right.
You want the Board of Assessors, because you have a discussion with the whole Board of Assessors. So what I'm asking you is that when you want.
No, the assessors. It's not, that's not it.
Well, anyway, when you want the assessors on your agenda, I'm just requesting if you could give us as much time as you could, you can.
Please, absolutely.
That's it.
Absolutely.
Floor's yours.
Sure, thanks. Okay, so we, uh, my, my understanding is that, um, the chair of the Board of Assessors, uh, couple of weeks ago asked to meet with the, uh, the HR person to, um, to discuss posting a replacement for the current principal assessor. But let me just officially congratulate you, Gene, on all your years of service. Um, a lot of people don't realize, um, exactly everything that you've done, including actually being, uh, appointed as a member of the Select Board or the Board of Selectmen years ago. Well, but weren't you appointed first though?
Yeah, selected, I was the first woman.
Okay, but, all right, I I I apologize, my memory of that time was that, that the actual board resigned. Well, they did resign, all three members of the board.
And the town clerk and the treasurer elector at that time were appointed to serve out the chairman, and then I ran.
Well, I'd just like to congratulate you on being the first woman elected.
My son said to me that, I choose my, my history, I was my fifteen minutes of glory.
And then it was, what was it, three years of misery after that?
And the Martin Ode by law prevented her from running again.
Right, okay.
I'm proud of what we accomplished for the three years, we started land purchasing at that time, I ran on that platform, and now we're now the number one landowner in town at that time. We own nothing, brought the senior work of a bigger program into town, uh, gave the police the first good contract that they had. We accomplished a lot in those three years, so yes, I'm happy with that.
All right. And as I said, congratulations. Uh, so the issue is that we need to, uh, we knew sometime, sometime in the next many years, we were gonna have to replace that position. So the discussion was that, uh, not replace the position, but replace the person in the position, right? So the, uh, the idea is to, to post, um, to post the position. A post came out earlier this week, um, and I, um, forwarded that to council, to town council to get some feedback on it. Harris, do you wanna, do you want me to read the post, or do you have comments that you wanna make at this point, or?
I don't think you need to read the post, I can hit the highlights in my, in my comments. So, um, I think there's been discussion in the past and and it it really comes to to full circle with this job posting, um, with respect to the scope of the position for the assessor and where the authority to hire the assessor lies and what are the terms of agree, of employment with the assessor. And I wanted to just make some comments, um, that that everybody needs to understand and take into account uh, as the town moves forward to fill this position when, uh, Jean finishes up her time. First of all, the assessor position is covered by the Town Hall Employees Union. It is specifically called out in that contract, that's with the Mass Laborers District Council. Um, specifically called out in the recognition clause, in the hours of work and in the actual, um, uh, payment schedule in the back of the contract. So the position, um, that has been, uh, been published currently talks about a salaried position, it is not a salaried position, it's an hourly position per the contract. It also refers to the position as a department head, and per the contract, it is not a department head. And that's in Article Two of the contract, which, um, explains the definition of department head, which can be an appointing authority, and and really the appointing authority here, um, is the department head for the Assessor's Department. So I wanna make sure, and and the assessors can't separately negotiate a deal with a potential candidate. That's direct dealing and it could be an unfair labor practice. So you are constrained by the contract um, as a sort of a principle, um, an overriding principle in your search going forward. Uh, and then with respect to the description of the reporting functions, uh, there is certainly, obviously, there are statutory requirements that, excuse me, that the Assessors Board, uh, the Board of Assessors has with respect to the hiring, but because the employment contract is through the union and that's through the Select Board, the Select Board has the authority over the, um, those terms and conditions of of employment in the contract. And then with respect to, uh, operational responsibilities, there are obviously operational responsibilities with respect to the Board of Assessors.
I have a great deal of esteem for you. Both of you served on this board, were in, and both of you were chairs. So you understand how difficult this is. I'm, and you, I apologize.
All three.
You were, you understand how difficult this can be. That was never my intention, and the truth is, all three of you, all three of you have known me for more than thirty years. We've worked together and you know what kind of person I am. You worked with Mike. Look, this is not an attempt to insult anybody or to circumvent the law. It's an attempt to do it properly. And all I would ask, I would ask for your indulgence and your patience while we work through this because clearly, the way it is right now is the way it's been for decades. And if it's wrong, it's been wrong for decades. So let's fix it now. Is that fair?
But we still have, you need to acknowledge that there, that this time is of the essence.
Absolutely.
This is, this has a drop dead date. August first.
I get it. What, what is, what is, well, what is urgent is a, is a budget and an ATM which we have in less than a month. And is also urgent is end of the year and replacement for it. And, and I understand it is, it is a priority, which is why we're here now. Maybe we should have been here sooner. But we're here now. I can't do it any quicker than I am right now. So counsel is on, they've asked for it, they'll look at it, and I'll put something on the agenda so we can revisit it next week.
Who's getting the opinion to her?
I just gave everyone the opinion.
Okay, but I want to make sure it goes to your counsel tomorrow. So who's going to take care of that?
Attorney Karen, I'm sure that I'm think, there was nothing personal here, believe me, it just that there's been a lot of frustration from this board over the last seven or eight years.
I think it's a lot longer than that.
Well, regardless. And I want to do it right. I represent the town. I don't represent Mike Marali, I don't represent the select board, I don't represent the assessors, I represent the town, and I want to make sure the town is doing it properly.
That's fine.
So if somebody please, Gene, if you can get me that opinion, I would be very appreciative.
I just don't want to leave her without knowing who's.
Who's going to be responsible for giving it to her by tomorrow?
I'll do it right now.
Okay, there you go.
And I'd be sorry.
Thank you.
You know, you don't want to. I don't want to create more real.
And again. That I'm sending you to Jim Crow about a year ago and Jim affirmed that it was still valid.
And Ken Woodland has affirmed it's still valid.
Fair enough. That's fine. I still need to read it with my own eyes.
I know.
All right.
I know.
Gentlemen and lady, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's talk about the update for Providence Road. And it is safe for you to come up to the table, John. And Isabella is, is here as well because there's a component of conservation and GEP to all of this as well. So have the horse, sir.
So I know I've been to you guys quite a few times about Providence Road and there's one has been some mixed signals coming from Mass DOT when I finally got their the head of the bridge divisions take on what needs to happen on Providence Road. And that is that needs to be engineered before we do anything. Other portion to that is that DEP has also said that when we replace this, it has to meet the stream crossing guidelines. There are fifteen of them. They also require it to be engineered. If in an emergency situation, we, we reach out to Concom and say, we want to replace this in kind, same two pipes size. That is not going to meet stream crossing standards. And that Ty and Bond or whoever we decide we want to use would have to come out, look at the project, send something to DEP saying this does not meet the string crossing standards, and then we have to give them a notice of intent, and we have three years to fix it. Meeting the stream crossing standards. So my recommendation is right now, we don't do anything aside from start the engineering process because it needs to be done one way or another. Hope that it doesn't flood again. If it does, do I want to do this twice? No. Do we keep putting a Band-Aid on it, ripping it off? I don't want to do that, but we kind of have to.
What are the stream crossing guidelines? What does that mean in terms of a solution?
So it's a tricky site, just the width of the FEMA flood hazard is very wide, the stream. The, as we saw with the stream overtopping the road like that, that is how wide the stream is. And so for Concom's jurisdiction, there's a bunch of habitats that were not habitat, but resource areas, there's the land underwater, there's the bordering wetland, and then there's the upland. And so all of that needs to be looked at with the engineer. But the stream crossing standards get looked at as Concom and DEP will review the project would be potential for downstream flooding, upstream and downstream habitat, potential for erosion and head cutting, stream stability, habitat fragmentation, amount of stream mileage made accessible by improvements, storm flow conveyance, and a whole few other ones. And so I think the importance for this one is extent of the FEMA flood hazard and any changes that kind of get made to culvert size, length of the culvert, direction of the culvert. It's not up to the Conservation Commission or John to determine.
I do have a, a couple of questions. I just want to understand the current situation is there are two, what, two foot diameter pipes?
Five foot diameter.
Five foot diameter.
Five foot diameter pipe.
And what is the current capacity of each one?
One of them.
Percentage wise.
Operating at about ten percent, the other one's probably operating fifty.
Okay, so one of them is ninety percent occluded, the other one's fifty percent occluded. Essentially. And the discussion that you and I had, I, I, I may be paraphrasing, you correct me, is that if there is, if there's a failure again, I mean where the road has to be closed, and we repair it. If we don't, if, if, if the repair is reviewed or examined by Department of Environmental Protection and Mass Highway, and it's not done right.
It's, I can tell you, because I heard from Ty and Bond, I reached out to them last week after our meeting and I asked them to look into the option of replacing it with three pipes, and I can tell you.
The three pipes or the two pipes?
The pipes in general.
Okay, the pipes in general.
I asked them about the three pipes, but response is that piped or multiple pipe systems would not meet the mass street crossing standards and is not a recommendation from Ty and Bond for the Providence Street Culvert. Any structure that exceeds ten feet also requires chapter eighty-five review by Mass DOT. You'll definitely need at least ten foot span at Providence Street, so no matter what, you can avoid the process with Mass DOT or the review or the approval, and there's no saving time on this with the design. Mass DOT and DEP both require an engineer design that is reviewed and approved by both. The proposal that was given to us before is the best course of action to move forward with the hydraulic and hydrologic study this time, which we were going to exclude last time. Because they're going to have to be done in order to move forward with this.
But again, what to, to, to my point, I don't think anybody would disagree that we have to have it engineered. We have to have it designed and repaired properly. My issue is that I, I think it's as close to a hundred percent as it can be certain that with the weather we're seeing and the flow rate and we're going, we're going to have a failure again. So my question is, when we, if, if and when that failure happens, and we open up the road enough to replace those occluded, those pipe, those closed off pipes, if it's already closed anyways, wouldn't it make sense to do that if it's a couple of extra days of closure or even a week of closure? To make sure that at least it wouldn't fail again until it can prop, be properly repaired.
But then we're spending money twice to do it.
But, well, I, I would argue that we're going to spend that money a dozen times with all the failures if we don't. Because I think it's, how long is it going to be? I mean, listen. We typically would expect the, the, you know, to be pretty low right now. I mean, I know spring is happening, but over the wintertime and in the fall, I mean, I think you'd all agree, we've had failures in the wintertime when we typically would never have that happen before, but we do now. In this spring, it's going to get worse. So in other words, we, the reality is, we can't just say, well, just ignore it until we get the design done, and it'll go away because it won't. And the question is, when it does fail again, what do we do? Do we just backfill it again until the next time it fails? Or do we actually take a few extra days and change those pipes out? Because we know we have to redesign and do it anyways. I, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting, of course, I'm asking the question in the discussion.
You're sort of saying, yeah, we need to do it the right way, long term, and start that process, but in the interim, if we have to do interim repair, do it interim repair because we're doing it the right way, but we need something a little more substantial.
Well, we need to, yeah, we need to make a more, a more permanent temporary repair.
Right.
So it's not happening over and over and over again. And, and the other thing I'll add in there, I was actually on the phone with our state rep, Brian Murray, on the way into the, he was on the way into the state, I was explaining to me how, you know, they were going to cut the budget and he, he didn't really want to put in the whole two hundred thousand dollar earmark. And I told him, you need to put in the two hundred thousand dollar earmark. Now, we may not get access to those funds until late next year, but he gave me no guarantees. But then I sent him a text at the end of the day and he said to me, I put in the total two hundred thousand dollar earmark. Now, that doesn't mean that once it gets through the committee, but ways and means, put it together and they, they put in a two hundred thousand dollar earmark for the cost of the design, which is the upfront that we can't get through grants. And then the other thing is, he, he, I'm going to give both of you his cell, both Isabella and John, and I want you to talk to him. Because what he wants to do is he has a lot of other ideas, and maybe you can even get into Greg's office because he's had a lot of experience with this. And he's, the, the, the state rep Brian Murray says there are a lot of other resources that he can point us to for other grants and other monies. So we can do this. But all I'm getting at is, and I want the board's buy-in, that if this fails again and we have to close the road again, I would rather close it one more time for a week than close it for a day and a half and then have it intermittently closed again and again and again over the next two or three years. Does that make sense to everybody?
Would there be any issues with us doing tech, more permanent temporary repairs from a regulation standpoint? Could be an emergency permit through them, knowing that we're doing the right. We're doing, we're going to hopefully alleviate the flooding until we can get this done the right way to meet all the standards.
Yeah, I think the likelihood that we get through next winter is practically zero.
Without. So my. Yeah, so my idea is if you've got, if you've got, I mean, right, Brian even right down to, you know, you've got these five foot pipes that are metal that are crushed. He, he would, he actually wanted to speak to Highway because they may have a couple of plastic double wall pipes that they could give us to replace.
We're looking at about a hundred and twenty feet.
So ask them. Isabella, I'm sorry.
I'm also just going to weigh in that doing it as a temporary repair and putting in new pipes, there's a lot of considerations to the volume of the stream flow right now where we'd have, you'd have to find a very good contractor to dam and stop the flow upstream or reroute it and provide de-watering stations and all of that kind of work. You, it's not just, you know, get the highway guys to go in the day after the storm happens.
Not the highway guys.
Right, it would be a contractor.
Yeah.
But, but at the same time, but I guess what I'm trying to understand is, the water's going to flow. Right? So even if you, I mean, you said, talk about damming it, but we, I mean, damming it is still going to keep going, right? I mean, where, where is it going to go? I mean, I, I understand is it'd be, have to be, what, some way to bypass around it? While they put the pipes in?
I think pump it out.
Pump it out. So pump it, pump and pump it over the road.
Ideally, it'd be nice to do this when there is minimal.
Well, I agree.
How long do we wait?
But, but the issue is, if you, that's why I say, but if you, if you wait until it's low, then it's not an emergency repair. Right?
What's the, what's the criteria for emergency repair? Can you wait until it's low?
It's, John is the public health official making the recommendation to the Conservation Commission. So that the Conservation Commission.
That's whatever John says.
That was beautiful.
So either the chair would, the chair would approve the certification and the board would have to ratify it at the next meeting if that happens. I would say the one can, the one, I will just, again, back to the two-way on Cemetery. I, and based on the conservation, the last board meeting with the board members, having that viable option of a two-way, closing the road for a longer period of time to keep having the opening and closing and rerouting people, making that, if it's going to be this box culvert replacement, it's going to be closed for a little while. So getting people used to that additional commute or that rerouting down Cemetery Street is maybe something you guys need to.
I'll weigh in. I have a, I have a little bit of experience with, with traffic and accidents and reconstruction. And I was a cop here for a long time when the, when that road was a two-way road, but there's a big difference between now and then. The two differences are, are traffic flow, the volume of flow. And I would ask Chief Curzy to weigh in, and the other one is there are additional homes that were added on that road with driveways that have to get in and out. And the, having two-way traffic on that road is potentially disastrous. It's why it was turned into a one-way. And my thought is that if, if we were ever going to do it for any length of time, it would need to have some kind of alternating traffic light where it let traffic flow one way or the other. And even that would not be ideal. I mean, I, I'm, I'm against, I'm against turning and opening Cemetery Street to, to two-way traffic because I, I think it could be disastrous. But Chief Curzy, I, I, I hope you're listening. Can you weigh in and give us your opinion on that?
Yep, absolutely. I was just about to raise my hand. No, I agree with everything you said, Chairman Maroli, and we would have to have an analysis done of that road, and I say that all the time when it comes to, that's a side road, that's not a main road like Providence Road. I would want, you know, someone from the state coming out analyzing that road. I don't want to have a short-term solution to one problem and now create another problem on another road. And by being that there's other culverts and bridges, there's a small little bridge on there. Traffic in the past thirty years, Chairman's right, I mean, I started here almost thirty years ago, it's tenfold. It's, it's not even, it's, you can't even compare what it was thirty years ago. And now the truck traffic from all the industries around here going back and forth, along with the residents increasing, men is a drive-through town. There's a lot of traffic on Providence Road. We did the analysis for the senior center and it was something like seventeen thousand cars a day. So, you know, those are going to be going down Cemetery Street now if we did that on a long-term basis. So I, I, I worry about road failure, safety for the residents there. And then the other small little bridge that the, the trucks pass on over there, that isn't even probably rated over there.
So I think it was, I, I, I think one of the residents, that's part of the reason it was made a one-way was because that road simply could not bear the weight and the traffic.
Yeah, so for a long-term solution, I, I don't think that's, I don't think you'll wait next three years if the, the bridge goes down to do that. My only other thing with the other, what John's been talking about is, you know, I have a little bit of experience when we did the police station, some other projects around town. I know you're talking about a quick fix, but I can't imagine that quick fix would be anything over a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I, I, I almost, I, I guess my question would be, how long would it take to do the engineering? And I mean, do we just go shoot for the real fix at that point instead of throwing that kind of money away?
That's what I wanted to get back to is the real fix. What's the timeline and the costs that we have in front of us? You have, you have, you have engineering now.
I, so the, the engineering with the hydrologic and the hydraulic study is seventy-five thousand dollars. And that will get us to a point where they say, these are your three options that will meet the stream crossing standards, and these are the estimated costs of these. Now you guys need to choose what you want to do and move forward with.
Seventy-five on top of the fifty you have for engineering already?
No, that's, that would include the fifty.
So we, you.
Twenty-five.
Additional twenty-five.
Right.
Now, to do this.
No, 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 I'm still on the permanent, but we need to get that started.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, my, my whole thing about the, the, the temporary repair is we're going to spend that extra money anyways, doing these piecemeal repairs every time it fails. That's all I'm getting at.
Yeah, do we want to authorize the additional twenty-five or do you have the additional twenty-five?
I think you have additional twenty-five in your budget right now, don't you?
I would have to look. And did we?
Well, you know what? Why don't you look and we'll talk about that next week.
But you still have the fifty from ARPA that we put out.
Fifty from ARPA, and then you had talked about another two hundred and fifty from ARPA towards the roads.
No, two hundred and fifty from land sale.
For land.
Which is going to be, it's an article in the Warren.
Right. So why don't you?
And you've got chapter ninety, you've got.
Yeah.
Chunk.
Yeah, but that.
Four hundred. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, let's, so this week, we'll, we'll put it, we'll actually revisit this next week. But reach out to, get, get with Greg, reach out to, to John, John Frenkie, right? Brian Murray, yeah, there we go. Brett, Brett, yeah, well, not that long, Brett, Brian Murray. And, and I had his office help you brainstorm to do this. So I think the idea is, let's move ahead as quickly as we can with a permanent repair. But let's decide what the backup is going to be because we're all certain it's going to fail again. And I just would rather have it repaired. I'd rather, if we're going to have to repair, do an emergency repair, let's repair it. But let's do emergency repairs as few times as we can. If we could, if there's a way, even, even if we could just pull out the, you know, the pipe that's only, it's only at ten percent, even if we just pulled out one of them, just to increase the flow enough so that it doesn't go over the road when it, and, and fail every time. You know?
I will just weigh in on doing that and not having an engineer look at even the temporary repair. Like, maybe John knows, but I don't know how long that pipe has been at a reduced flow rate. So if you put in a new pipe and it now has the flow rate of fifty years ago or thirty years ago when it was first installed, and it's changed, the velocity of the stream has changed. Again, the downstream impacts, there's houses in the floodplain.
Well, the issue is, the issue is that when there's a flood, the water is flooding over and going over the bank anyways. So I can't imagine that having a hundred percent capacity at that height.
Still, it's the road is still holding back water temporarily.
Right.
So it's still a reduced flow than it all going through the pipe at the same time. But that's again where an engineer would know best.
Right, that, well, and I'm not. Right, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at. And, and I would, I would suggest that, you know, when you have the engineer looking at it and they're doing the permanent repair, have them look at the whole picture and make them aware of the, of, you know, what your consideration is because I'm certain that, you know, I think Mike's, Mike's an engineer, I'm an engineer. You know, Brendan's an all different, none of us maybe with, with, with fluid flow, but I mean, the engineer who's looking at it could give you all of those answers. And I would, Vinnie, I also, I know, you know, you're a water guy, right? Well, then, you know, I would, I, I, I would request that you, you know, feel free to weigh in on this too.
Yeah. I just don't know enough back.
Well, I, and I didn't mean right this minute. I meant get the background and, because I, I, I think that the more from the community we can use as, as a whole, the better off we'll be. You know, so I, I think that's a great update and, and thank you for, both of you for all of your efforts and you know, everything that you're, you're finding out, but, but reach out to the, to the TA, we've had a couple of conversations about it. And let's circle back in a week with a, with a plan. What was the last one about?
The last one was the least of them. The first one in December was very significant. I could go back and look at the numbers, but it's just, it was material, it was time, it was asphalt. The last one was a day and not a lot of materials.
So what is it about, about, and plus we have to, about forty K the first time?
Yeah, it's really, it's really going to be materials.
Because you're using, other work's not getting done because. Well, you know how many hours? Plus time. Public safety too, wash, right?
Where, and that's, that's the other part of this too, is we continue to fix this, fix this and fix this. Well, we are now coming into the busiest time of year and we are, we have a schedule that we need to keep moving forward to make sure that we're on track. We have winter next year.
Right, so I mean, we're only, it's got to get fixed, right? So we got to move on it, get the engineering done.
It's taking, it's taking away from.
The weather pattern show that it's significant anymore.
That's right.
Never mind what's going to happen, this supposed hurricane.
So, so what I would say is take this week, circle back, talk to Mass Highway, talk to our state rep. And let's circle back in a week with a, with a plan, what we do if there's, if, you know, if and most definitely when it fails again, and then the long-term view of it.
And we want to kick off like the engineering phase.
Right, well, I think we can, yeah, that's what I mean. Let's, let's, that's what I'm saying. Start that, let's get that started. Because that initial monies, we have it earmarked, and we know where it's going to come from. So let's start it.
You want me to sign?
Yes.
He needs to sign the contract for that, or you need to sign it.
I'll, call me in the morning.
It's just real quick, Jody, from your perspective, if we've allocated ARPA funds, do you need anything specifically to make sure we're accounting for ARPA being allocated for engineering? Or do you already have that?
One of them, or is, it, it's not going to hurt to vote again.
It's not on the list.
Documented, I mean, the last one that I had was for fifty thousand dollars for an ARPA allocation for general engineering. Thanks, John. So we called it Providence Street Culvert General Solution.
And that, that was actually last week, I think.
Yeah.
We changed, right?
Yeah, we changed.
But that's, that was for engineering, right?
I think it was two weeks ago.
Oh, two weeks ago.
Yeah, because I wasn't here.
I wasn't.
Right.
So you have what you need in terms of understanding the vote author, the authorization of the board, and he can go ahead and dispense the funds, expend them.
Yep, so it's basically an accounting thing at this point. So as long as we go back, review the meeting, have the board help, Laura gets us a memo, we send it to accounting. They set up an account with appropriated ARPA funds. I give John the account number, we're good to go.
Yep.
All right.
To answer your question, in December, the first time that this flooded, was estimated about five thousand dollars in materials and manpower just to fix that. The first time.
But it's, you got to break out the materials and the manpower if you can, just because the manpower is, we're taking it away from doing something else, right?
Right.
Did you say five thousand?
Five thousand.
Five thousand?
Five thousand. And that was a number that was sent to Chief Curzy and Mark Pacino for FEMA purposes or MEMA purposes.
How many times have we repaired it?
Three.
Three.
So we've repaired it three times.
And that was the, the five thousand was the hu, the largest. So we, we should actually kind of forecast that a little bit, because I mean, I thought it would have been more than five.
Me too.
Yeah.
And I think, and I think you find when you drill down, it was, especially when you start to figure out if you had any overtime.
That's me.
Right.
That's, that's my guys fixing it and that's the materials we needed. That's not public safety in the time they had to dedicate to it. That's not the additional cost for everything else.
Chief, chief, Chief Curzy, can you begin that process of the, of the traffic impact of, of the refill, of the flowing it around and what it can handle on Cemetery Street when we close this and the considerations of that?
Yeah, I can get that done. One other question I had just for John in general, if, you know, you're looking at a temporary repair. I think John and I had a conversation previous about this, you know, just talking to engineers in general. So if we had to do something temporarily, if they kind of know where they're heading with something that would pass, you know, almost try to lean towards that way, so you don't have to dig it all up again. And then there's other options, like when we did the two-inch pipes or three, four-inch pipes that were going for the septic system when we did the system that ran from the school all the way to the highway department. That was all done through underground drilling. So I don't know if there's some type of technology available that wouldn't be as expensive where they could add extra pipes to go through to relieve some of the water for now.
Yeah, well, let's call Elon Musk and the boring company, it's already a crush, right?
The ten percent one, I don't think we're getting a sleeve into it. The other one, maybe.
John, the material cost of five thousand. Didn't Kimball delete much of material?
Not that, not that time, but you know what? And again, apologies, you know, we've got people waiting. This is an interesting conversation, but let's take it offline and we'll come back and circle back with a, with a plan in a week. Reach out to anybody that you need. Okay?
And I will get that contract going.
All right.
For seventy-five thousand.
All right, thanks. All right. Executive session, right? All right.
Say.
Move to enter an executive session, purpose ten, Master General thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight, ten, discuss trade secrets for confidential, competitively sensitive, rather proprietary. Information provided in the course of activities conducted by a government body as an energy supplier under license. Granted by the Department of Public Utilities per section to section one F. Of chapter one sixty-four in the course of activities conducted as a municipal aggregator under section one thirty-four, said chapter. One sixty-four or in the course of activities conducted by a cooperative consisting of government entities organized pursuant to one thirty-six, said one sixty-four. When such governmental body, municipal aggregator or cooperative determines such disclosure. Will adversely affect its ability to conduct business in relation to other entities making, selling, distributing electric car and energy. Mendon and Hope Dale Water Sewer and Mendon Highway Department. I need a roll call vote. Morali, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Bruko, aye.
All right.
Got to do the breakout.
All right, we'll do the breakout room. We're only going to return to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. You know it.
And I remember, like, that's like on one breath.
Laura and I were on that same. How can we, how can we, and we realized, why would we just? Deal with it. Jack, do you want to start or should we?
Let's, let's.
No, I'd like to, once, once they're ready.
Let's get the, we got to get the breakout room set and just give us a minute.
I'll give them the saga, Kevin.
Is it?
Not letting me pick.
The House Ways and Means submitted their budget.
Well, that's why I was talking to them.
Wait, let's see if we can get you into.
Okay. But it makes sense to stop recording.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not the, it's not the three percent that the governor wanted, but you know, it's not done yet. It was.